And recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Alderman Davidson. Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Mayor's airing.
Present. All right, thank you. We have more. All right, good evening. It's always good to have some ceremonial matters like this. We've got several things this evening. First of all, we've got some service awards to give out. I'm going to ask that Samuel Williams and Kristi Hunsinger, if you're here, to come forward. So there we go. I guess we are doing that, Chief. Come on up. I was thinking through one down there, so I'm sorry.
I didn't either.
All right, and I am going to, Chief, so Samuel Williams, we've got a five-year certificate for you, and we have a 10-year for you. It's always amazing to me how fast time seems to fly, at least for us, when it comes to this. Hopefully, you know, you guys are like, wow, I can't believe it's been five years or 10 years already, but... Exactly. But we can't thank you all enough for your service to our community. We appreciate the dedication. Hopefully, you love our community as much as we do. I would say it probably says a lot that you've been here as long as you have, but I know that the job that you do often goes unappreciated, so please know that you are appreciated, even though you probably don't hear it enough. So you hear it from me, you hear it from our board when it comes to the things that you guys do for our community, and we really do appreciate it. So I'm going to give you your 10-year certificate and your five-year, and then, Chief, or anybody that wants to have something to say about this, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Yeah, I'll hold this, because I promised that I would say something real quick.
Or I can hold it for you.
Well, whatever works.
How about that?
Just wanted to mention real quickly, Corporal Samuel Williams has over 12 years of law enforcement experience, five of those obviously here with HPD as of today, right? Served in crisis intervention training, firearms instructor, is a field training officer in armor, less lethal instructor, and just signed up to be a part of our new peer support group in a joint effort with our firefighter friends, so... And he's here tonight with his wife Caitlin and family, so thank you for... So then I promised, because Detective Hunsinger, Reisinger, right? She is here with her husband and family as well, and she had asked Lieutenant Kincaid to say a few words, because Lieutenant Kincaid trained her, and so he sent a message that I'd like to read real quick. First of all, he wanted to apologize for not making it tonight. He is out of town. I would like to congratulate Detective Hunsinger on her dedicated service to the city of Harrisonville and its residents over the past 10 years. Detective Hunsinger joined the department in 2014, and I had the privilege of serving as one of her field training officers. In January 21, Kristi was promoted to the Investigations Division, making her the first female detective in the history of the police department. I will pat myself on the back, because I'm pretty sure I taught Detective Hunsinger everything she knows. Thank you, Kristi, for your remarkable decade of service. Your hard work and commitment are greatly appreciated, so.
Thank you. We're going to do some pictures, which is us now. What's your families come up here, because this, you're very much, just as much of a part of this service as as they are. I know that, being in the military, a lot of people thank me for my service, but I did what I did because I loved it. Yeah, I had some separation from my family and all that, but it's the families that really, really dedicate the most and sacrifice the most when it comes to the service of those that are in these types of services. So we're going to bring them up as well. All right, everybody.
Thank you.
Wait until we've done all the things, and then get big group meeting. Thank you, guys. All right, yes, sir. I'm going to keep you going with it, and I'm going to keep holding this, if you want, a badge pinning. We've got it going on.
Yes, sir, thank you. So tonight, we are honored to recognize newly promoted Sergeant Dylan Bell. Sergeant Bell has five years with HPD, served as a corporal this past year. He's also been a field training officer, member of the Honor Guard, firearms and less lethal instructor, previous explorers instructor, and he's a well-respected member of the department. We look forward to the great things he will do as a leader within the Harrisonville Police Department. So tonight, we are honored to promote him to the rank of sergeant, and pinning his badge on tonight will be his wife, Dara.
Oh, yes, you can. Come on up. No, that's okay. Come on up.
That's good. That is good.
All right, thank you, Chief. Thanks to all the officers and family members. All right, we had no public participation. All right, next up, we're going to have the approval of the minutes for the Board of Aldermen Regular Meeting, October 21st. Those are in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those stand as written. Next, we have the Board of Aldermen Work Session from October 21st.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those will stand approved. First item, agenda item, is Council Bill 61.
Council Bill 61 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, adopting the 2025 Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan for the State of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. In accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000s, the City of Harrisonville had participated in the preparation of a multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan known as the 2025 Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This plan consists of natural disasters, right, and so each five years, five counties, 37 cities, 23 school districts, two colleges, five fire districts get together and they put together a single plan, and that's how federal funding is put forward, and this is ours for 2025. The next time it happens will be in 2030. So if there's something that goes in between now and then, we have the ability to change our plan. Patty and Christina helped, well, we all three did a pretty good, a lot of hours putting this together, so it should be pretty, pretty complete and Ted. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. We're just seeking your approval.
Any questions for the Chief? We appreciate all your work on that.
Is there any cost associated with this?
No.
Just your time?
A lot of man-hours we put together, but, but the cost is nothing. The cost of not doing it's a lot higher.
One of those.
We hope we never have a disaster, but we need to be prepared.
All right, and so no questions, and then I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Davidson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 61 is now Resolution 2024-29. Next up, we have the second reading, Council Bill 60.
Council Bill 60 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, providing for the extension of the city limits by annexing approximately eight acres of adjacent territory owned by David A. and Lisa K. Warden located north of Twin Pines Golf Course and west of Chrissy Bend into the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, establishing the zoning as agriculture, A District, and establishing an effective date. Second reading, Council Bill 60.
All right, Christina.
Public hearing was last meeting. We haven't had any calls or emails, any questions on this application. Haven't had any concerns come up related to that, so we're good for second reading.
Any further questions for Christina on this? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Got a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Fauch. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 60 is now Ordinance 3712. Thank you all. Yep.
Yes, welcome to the city. Are you sure you know what you're getting into?
All right, so I guess that wraps up our agenda. We're going to move on to Aldermen and Committee Reports. Let's start with Alderman Milner.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Nothing from Alderman Dorhoff.
If you haven't already, make sure you get out to vote tomorrow. Extremely important election. Lots on the ballot, and go Chiefs.
All right, thank you. Alderman Fauch.
Veterans Day is coming up on the 11th, and I just want to recognize the veterans in the crowd. I think there's a ceremony that's going to be moved up, I think, instead of the 11th, it's going to be on the 8th, so if you're around to participate in that, I'm sure the veterans would appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Turner.
Nothing else to add.
All right. Give the City Administrator all kinds of time. Alderman Mills.
I enjoyed the newsletter. I keep continuing to educate the citizens. I'm thanking the volunteers for cleaning up the creek.
Thanks, Turner. Sorry you pictured.
All right, Alderman Davidson.
Go Chiefs, and also congratulations to the Harrisonville Wildcats Football Team. Won first round of the districts, plays over Pleasant Hill, which is this Friday at 7:00 p.m., so support them as much as you possibly can. Go Cats.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Franklin.
I wanted to give a shout-out to the Electric Department. Last week, coming into Halloween, I think it was on the 30th, 29th, 30th, we lost our power, and although it was off a little bit longer than usual, it was right back on. Everything was working, and from what I understand, there was a couple of other outages as well, so I thought they did a great job, and kudos to them for getting out of there three hours in the morning and weather and everything else, the winds that we had last week, so appreciate all the work that they do for that. I also wanted to say, go Chiefs. I hope they win tonight, and congratulations to the Wildcats. I also wanted to say something kind of good for Veterans Day. Vips, my husband and I, as you know, is part of that, and they are the ones that go out and put up those flags all the way around the courthouse, and it is stunning to go through and see that. You know, John Foster has been behind that and got that started, so he might just pay homage to that a little bit more, maybe especially this year with everything that's been going on and unrest that we seem to have in our country, so that's my...
All right, thank you, Alderman Franklin. Alderman Chaney.
I don't have much. Let's go Wildcats, for sure. Good job to the varsity team. With the election around, I hope that no matter what the outcome is, that after it's over, we all love each other and remain solid, foundational American people, working together, and I guess, go Chiefs.
You guess. He sounds, he sounds like a Denver Broncos fan, man.
It's like standing in front of a freight train.
Yeah, you're right. All right, thank you, City Administrator.
All right, City Hall will be closed following Monday on the 11th for Veterans Day. We scheduled from today the ribbon-cutting out there airport. We didn't figure anyone wanted to be out in the middle of a lightning storm. Last week, Patty was in a lot of meetings at Mark, and one of the good things is we got 4.2 million out of the SVP funding for the I-49 mechanic, so you know, we get a lot of complaints about that area right there, and I can tell you, being on that board and being a part of that, she walked in with no funding and was able to come out with funding, and any Cass County city that comes out of there with more than $2 million is a big deal. So getting those funds for that project, it's about a 5.3 million project. We will probably turn that into a MoDOT cost share to try to reduce our continuing cost to a MoDOT road, and to get that to where it needs to be, and so that is for the 2027.
2027, 2027, 2028.
Yeah, which their fiscal year starts October 1 of 2026.
I'll probably push for 2028, just because we haven't started designing, and the rest has got to get their money in line, too, so.
So that'd be upcoming for that, and then continual repairs at the hangars and everything at the airport, sealing the doors, that's going on by staff, and then the South Sur project is at 78% completion. I always practice that when Carl puts it down to like 78, so rounding up to 80 or 81. Just to remind everybody that we are, have notified that contractor of liquidated damages daily at $500, starting since May, on that project, so Mr. Meyer's been involved with those discussions. And then the Ash Street Bridge Town Creek Project, that has bid, and staff's going over those bids for the best and final. I do want to point out to the Aldermen, in that report, that you do have a person that in the 11th hour decided not to cooperate with that project. We can still do the project, but it will impact some properties on making sure that the flooding is gone for their properties as a result of that person, that I put their name down for you to read. So if you have any ability to talk to that person, it would probably be best to talk to them here pretty quick. The Bechardite Project is, was advertised on the 11th, and it bids on the 12th of this month, James Street, Blueberry Storm Water Improvement, was advertised and it bid on the 29th. Staff's reviewing it with the Ash Street Project as well, and our hope is to have all three of them by the 15th under contract. If you all recall, those are all ARPA stormwater funds that are doing those projects. World Street Extension Project is moving forward. We've met with contractor. Staff is working to get a contract put together and finalized on that project. Out there at the airport, Hangar Reynolds, we've got nine on the waiting list, seven tie-downs that are available. It doesn't seem like a lot of them like to do the tie-downs. Then, as Alderman Franklin pointed out with the Electric Department, we, last week, had three days of horrible wind, and then a storm at the end of that third day, and those were the two major outages that we had as a result. One was a large limb that fell on a person's line that pulled off the rest of the lines, affected six homes, and then the other one was a large tree that fell on the back behind in a price chopper that affected the bigger outage. But that's a pretty good sign of the investment you all made about three years ago, of doing more and spending more to trim trees and remove trees from our power lines. The Police Department did the drug take-back and received, I believe, 108 pounds of direct prescription drugs. Want to thank Sergeant Michael Davis and his upcoming retirement, 17 years that he's been with the Harrisonville Police Department. We thank him for his service, and again, congratulate Dylan Bell and his promotion tonight. We get a lot of good feedback comment from the community of his good work in the community. The Fire Department also received $90,000 in federal funds toward radios. Remember, we were talking that in our last budget cycle, so that's going to help in going toward our radios. And then another committee that we is on, they were able to get $400,000 for a Town Creek Trail Project, and that's taking a trail from Lord's Park to Independence Street, and that will do a lot of improvement for connectivity between those two areas as well. And then lastly, the old hospital's gone.
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions from the media? No questions? All right, thank you for being here, sir. All right, with that, I'm just going to wrap it up with, do you want to thank staff again? I mean, it's clear in these meetings, all the work that you guys do in our work sessions, of all the work and the time and effort that you guys put into, I mean, I just think of these grant funds and things that we get. I don't know everything that goes into getting a grant, but let me tell you what, I can only imagine. It is not fun paperwork to deal with. There's nothing fun about that, so... Did you have something, Alderman Fauch?
I was just going to ask Patty if some of these little funds are going to start to dry up here after a while, or do you know?
Well, right now, right now, they, it's a consistent annual appropriation, so these are not the bipartisan infrastructure funds that went over and above. These are just our traditional funds, so if they continue to adopt, used to be a highway bill, now it's transportation bill. If we continue to see that, then we'll continue to see these funds.
Patty, can you recall off the top of your head, how many, how much money was available for the regular and how much was submitted?
We had $60 million available over the two years, and we had over $340 million requested. So that negotiation is a very tense, challenging thing, but we, I did partner with Bellton. We helped each other out. We both made sure we got our funds, and so go Cass County.
All right. And I know that's a lot of work. I know it's not, like you said, you're fighting for scratching and clawing for everything that you can get for little old Harrisonville here that I'm sure they can look over very easily, so...
Some of the city did not get what they expected, and so there will be focal opposition at the next level at the Total Transportation Policy Committee. So I'll be reaching out to our representatives on that to let them know what the issue is and what may come up.
That's why we're glad you're here.
I used to get their money for it.
I know, that's what I'm saying. There you go.
Representation, is that the final board on that approval?
Then I'll go TTPC and then the board. So it gets November 12.
And our, our representation is supposed to be Commissioner Johnson.
But I also happen to know a lot of numbers on that from both the Kansas and Missouri side, so I won't put them in my phone call system.
Got you. Perfect. Well, we do thank, we do thank you all, because it doesn't go unnoticed, like I said. You can just tell through these work sessions and the board, I know as the mayor, when I sat on as a board member, you guys made my job easy because you laid it all out left and right. Here you go. This is the decision that needs to be made, so we do appreciate that.
I just hope that he has to be the one to tell some door.
All right, and then with that, the last thing, you know, two things coming up that's already been mentioned. We have voting tomorrow, the election day tomorrow, and you've got Veterans Day coming up, you know, the following week, a week from today, and two things that appropriately go together, I think, in respect that, you know, I was often at, or I was been often told, you know, thank you for your service in that, but I was asked one time, what, you know, what can we do to show you our appreciation for your service? And I wasn't totally prepared to answer that at the time. It kind of caught me off guard, because you're never used to that. Let me tell you what, the, the one way to start to actually show your respect to those that have served is to vote. Our citizens are the government, and that is our voice, and only 2/3 of our citizens in this country go to vote. So if you want to show that honor and respect to those that have given their lives, their fortunes, their personal honor to serve and protect, just like our forefathers did, signing their name, 56 of them signed their name, their death warrant when they signed that Declaration of Independence. Many of them went broke, many of them lost their lives, but they knew what they were doing for the cause of our personal freedoms. And when we don't vote, that's just the first sign of the problems that we have in our country. So no matter where we land tomorrow after this election, I'm sure there's lots of drama to be played out, and we probably won't even have an answer tomorrow, I would imagine, that we need to know, and we need to educate our citizens, that they are the government, they have a responsibility they have a responsibility in our government. Don't just vote, know what you're voting for, and vote for the right things that are going to secure our freedoms. So I encourage everybody to get out there, and again, to educate people on that. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion from Alderman Davidson, with a second from Alderman Milner, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.